Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
I declare a quorum present, number three, approval of the minutes of meeting, May 9th, 2013.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for report and recommendation Lakota Group City of Wooddale Wayfinding and Signage Design Project. Mr. Forrest or Jennifer, which one is going to take the... Okay.
For the PZB to present some conceptual signage designs. They've been working to refine those, and you'll see in your packet, three concepts that are a result of your earlier comments, as well as a meeting of the Streetscape Committee. The Streetscape Committee members did take a look at these at their meeting earlier this month and felt very positively about them, and so tonight, we're looking for some direction from you as to which of these concepts is the preferred one. With that, I'll turn it over to Zach McConnell of the Lakota Group.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me tonight. As Jennifer said, we want to present all of the information we've prepared to date, which includes a couple of things. And first, just want to kind of go through the design process and how we got to where we are and what was presented last month. We first conducted a project start meeting and a tour of the city. We drove around with staff, excuse me, and witnessed all the different locations, the current signage and potential locations for additional signage in the future. We then coordinated with Public Works and had Julie Locates done at all of the existing signs and, once again, the proposed, potential proposed locations. And it's kind of discussed the general construction of what's out there today and the paths have been taken in the past. We then took all that information, developed a conceptual wayfinding plan and signage families, and there were three at the time we developed, and then presented to the Streetscape Committee. We took the input we received from that committee and prepared revisions in your packets. And today, as we said, we're here for a presentation on those signage families. This is a wayfinding plan. I apologize for the detail and how difficult it may be to see the locations of some of these elements, but in general basis, what we've looked at doing is looking at a couple of different things here. Looked at the major gateways, minor gateways, wayfinding directional signage, street signs, all through the community. And we went through multiple locations up here on Devon and Wooddale. If this is making anybody sick, I apologize for going too quickly. Right there off Irving Park, on both the east and the west end of town. And we looked down at the south end, too, at Oak Meadow Drive. Those are kind of your key entrance points into the community. So we start to go through and analyze all the different areas that these are potential for. You'll see the red dots are located as the, some potentials for minor gateways if it was felt necessary that identity needed to be driven home as people entered the city at those points. And then the green triangles are directional signage, directional signs that we have thrown out there kind of as a starting point to say, okay, what are your key locations that you need to locate or identify for visitors or even for residents or just in general to get people to move around efficiently through the community. So we have the high school, some of the parks, the park district, the fire department, city hall, the pool, the library and such, you know, preserves that are surrounding the neighborhood, excuse me, surrounding the city. And then, you know, as I said, some of the preserves on the south end as well. So it kind of just kind of gets you, you know, moving through the community in an efficient manner. From there, after we did our analysis, we developed our concepts, our sign families. And this is kind of what we call our prairie sign family. It really takes into consideration some of the prairie style of thinking, and it's very difficult and it's dangerous to mimic what Frank Lloyd Wright developed when the Prairie School and his style of architecture was developed. And you kind of balance on that line. We don't want to become too devoted to that because it can be criticized very easily. So we've taken some of the elements we feel that, you know, he took into heart and try to pull those into this sign family. Many of those things are nature. You'll see the thistle on the left-hand side of the directional sign and the right-hand side of the major gateway. That's kind of mimicking the natural form of a wheatgrass or a thistle of a plant. And the horizontal lines, which is somewhat difficult sometimes when you're in constraints for space for monument signs, they tend to want to be more vertical because you don't have a lot of room sometimes for horizontal, but we've tried to mimic some of those longer lines in those gateway elements. We've looked at some, taking your current logo and maybe more of an abstract feeling, you'll see in some of these in the leaf motif, an abstract looking, a way of looking at those, that logo. Not to say that it's dead on to what it needs to be, but we just try to take a crack at what potentially could be an interpretation of it and to kind of just bring some more art into the sign. One of the things we looked at in the upper right-hand corner is the welcome to, you know, welcome Wooddale. And those are kind of elements that would be placed around the community on the outer perimeters, just kind of continuation of the branding theme of the sign package and announcing, you know, to keep people familiar with where they are as they kind of skirt the perimeter of your community. Street name signs, and we have two options there, both on the right-hand side are exactly the same, but then the left-hand side, there's the thistle or the leaf motif as we've discussed. So we've kind of, like I said, we took the natural theme of the prairie style and tried to bring all that together into a sign family. With that, we have the same family, but with a more burnt umber color scheme. Some might just call it brown, which is fine. We've tried to make it a little more pizzazz to it by the burnt umber there. But it's, we wanted to do this and try this different color scheme because sometimes people look at a sign package and say, I don't like that. And what ends up happening is that when you discuss and kind of dissect what they don't like, it's the color, and it really throws them off. So we wanted to kind of play with that, and through our discussions, it came to the head as saying, you know what, these two color schemes are good, and we want to kind of see where they go from there. So if you, one more time, just look at the two and how they read to each, in comparison to each other. Maybe a little more dark subtle contrast than the brown. And from that, we'll go to concept we'll call B. This is more of a contemporary sign family. Very simple lines. We're looking at some mesh materials to make it maybe a little more airy around the sign panels themselves. Little more elongated, I guess you could say, in the form. Once again, the color scheme is more of a brown earth, earthy tone, but we're playing with that leaf motif again and trying to bring that symbol into this sign. Doesn't have to be even incorporated, it could be eliminated completely. It's not a major, it's not a major part of it, but it's not just subtle. It's also kind of a component that is, you know, give or take, and some people may not care for it, and we understand that. Once again, the Wooddale sign, welcome to Wood, welcome Wooddale element that would surround the perimeter of the community. So those are the three sign families that were presented to the Streetscape Committee, and we open it up just for discussions and how we develop these.
Alderman Lazara.
Can you tell me what these signs are made of?
Generally, the traditional form is aluminum, either eighth inch or quarter inch aluminum sheet panels. Many of the elements can be layered on top of themselves. If we were to go to, we'll say, this element itself right here. Multiple ways of constructing this, and it could be one piece of aluminum cut to shape, or it could be stacked on top of itself to give it some depth. All that could be vinyl, lettering, or screen printed, or those could be metal strips that create that form. We've done both forms. We just finished one in Gray's Lake where the architectural detail was so heavy that what we did in there on the sign, it would have been, it wasn't cost-effective to actually construct that out of aluminum panels.
What about the base? What's the base made of?
The base would have to, if we're to fall within a IDOT right-of-way, would have to be breakaway material, breakaway regulated. So one discussion we had here is that, does, should the base, should it be aluminum? Should it be a precast material, something that fits within that regulation? So that'll come down to both the standards and cost as well.
Alderman Lazara, go ahead.
So have we made any determination or has Streetscape made any determination as to what kind of signage we're going to use, or are we still deciding that?
Right now, we're deciding which grouping, design grouping, that we all prefer. From there, then they'll go to fabricators, and then we'll determine what's the best way to develop these signs to make them, you know, the most economical and they're going to be fabricated and designed slightly differently depending on where they're going to go and what rules. So if it's a county road or the state road versus one of our side streets or something, we'll have a little more flexibility with material and obviously, do we have land or is it going to be in the right-of-way? So all those things are being juggled or in play. Right now, we're just looking at it to determine which grouping we prefer out of the signs.
Okay. Alderman Lazara.
Can we go back to the map of where you have the locations? Can you zoom into the Irving, I think is the yellow star? Where is that at? You said that's a major, you said, right?
Correct. There's a dentistry, dentist office there. Edgewood.
That's going to be near the dentist office?
Correct.
Okay. Can I ask you, is there any plans at all? Because I think everyone knows I have this thing about our gateway as far as the train station, and the first thing that you see when you are coming into Wooddale is that ash and potter area. Is there any plans at all for a sign that says welcome to Wooddale near there? Because that's a gateway. And if not, I would really like to see something, even a lantern with, you know, welcome to Wooddale on it. It would be ash and potter.
Mr. Forrest.
What we could do, we haven't approached Metro yet, but to enable, to be able to put a sign there, we would have to come to some kind of an agreement with Metro because it would be located on their right-of-way. I think we've got a pretty good rapport with Metro, so I have a feeling we could get that if that was a location where you felt, and it probably would make sense to put, you know, even if we put one of the minor gateway signs there. Yeah. Yeah, I'll check that. If Metro wouldn't be agreeable to that, you know, perhaps the Legion or one of those properties along there, we could do something, yeah. And again, to expand on what Chairman Woods said, at this point, staff is looking for you guys to decide on, you know, narrow down, you know, which design you want to go with at that point. They can determine different fabricating methods, which is going to give us different prices, so we're able to assemble some kind of a budget. The other thing to keep in mind, and we discussed this, I believe, at Streetscape, is the two major gateway signs that were going to be on Thorndale, we may not want to put those up right-of-way because of the construction. You know, perhaps we can put some kind of a temporary sign up there or something along those lines until the construction is finished, but the other signs could probably be placed, you know, more quickly.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. On the location sign, and it might be here, I just need for you to tell me where it is. Are there any signs on or near the bike paths that we have going through Wooddale? I think that would be important, bicyclists, walkers, to know what's here in Wooddale, whether it be an ice cream shop or something calling out what's here. Is there anything in our current plans?
Right now, the design, I'm sorry, the directional signage that we developed was, is at a conceptual level. We'll definitely look at that as being something that's considered and added to that point. It was, I don't believe we focused it on the bike paths in particular. It was more roadway signage, but we can look at that in the next step and make sure that's covered.
Okay. So this location is, this is going to change? Is this what we're saying? We're not really voting in or firming up the locations right now?
Correct. Right now, I think the general intent is to get a design theme and kind of preferred direction from the concepts we've come up with today or presented today. That way, we can then move forward and know that we're moving in a consistent direction with what our package is going to be at the end of the day. And then we'll work with staff on developing a quantity of directional signs and where those are located at and what they actually say. That's the big key.
Okay. And then lastly, to follow up, that I would like to see more destinations than just the four that were listed, City Library, Metro Park. You know, I want to bring people in to see different businesses and attractions.
On that one point, one thing we have to follow, and Alderman Woods kind of made reference to this as far as the standards go, we, I'm sorry, we have to abide by what is called the manual for uniform traffic control devices. The short term is MUTCD, and it's a national standard. The Federal Highway Association puts it together. In doing that, letter sizes, font styles, colors, and contrast, readability, all come into play. One thing that IDOT will be looking for, if this is on their roadway, is that private organizations cannot be identified. It has to be a public use. So we can't say, you know, we'll say, ice cream shop is over here. And I'm just, I just want to make that clear. Sometimes we get down the road and people say, well, what is the purpose of this then? And the purpose is that we have to call out generalization, such as shopping, train station, things like that. So that's why, you know, as we look at some of the generalities of what we've shown here, those are categories that we'll have to kind of keep focused in, and the private sector can't get intersected in too much.
Sure. I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you and for clarifying as well.
Absolutely.
Alderman Jacob.
Just a couple of questions. This might be a little too early, but are either one of the designs, could we tell at this point, one's going to be more expensive or less expensive, or they're going to be about the same?
They're going to be about the same, same cost.
I mean, they look similar in size and everything.
Correct. The materials, the height, the width, they're all relatively the same. Some have, like the mesh materials, a little different in one, but they kind of balance each other.
And then with Concept A, we have two color choices, and Concept B, it's one color?
Correct. When we presented, we had had a color scheme that was a little out there, so we tried it, and it kind of sparked that conversation as, do we look at other color schemes and see if that stuck? And that's why we presented two in that one family. It's easily, you know, we could easily change the color scheme of the last concept to the green if somebody were to say, I like both. It's a melding point where we can now pick and choose some of these things we like and make a final, a final, you know, preferred concept.
Can I just see Concept B up there one more time?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
When Streetscape looked at this, which one were they looking at more to? Concept? One, two, or three, anyway?
At the last Streetscape Committee meeting, they didn't do an official review, but they did take a look at these, and they had said that either of the concepts, they'd be happy with either of them.
Okay. That's all I have at this time. I can interject a minute. At the meeting, probably the biggest conversation in the grouping, all three groupings were The one bone of contention, if there was one, was some people liked Wooddale all in one line. So if you look at this one, Wooddale is all in the same plane or on the same line. And in the other two, they're separated. I can say originally, it didn't bother me, but I'm looking at them in bigger scale on a projector now. I prefer it all in one line, so that would be what would help me make the decision. If that helps anybody else. Are there any other questions? Oh, Eugene Wesley.
Okay. I agree with the Wooddale in one line, but on the one with Wooddale in one line, will we be able to get that welcome thing underneath there?
If we could fit the welcome underneath on one of these, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. I mean, I really think the welcome is, you know, you're opening your arms up and say, welcome Wooddale.
Absolutely.
And I agree.
Absolutely, yeah.
I agree with you with one word, but I would like to see if the welcome could be put in there somehow.
Yeah. I think that on the basis of all those, that you'd be able to fit welcome on any one of them.
Absolutely.
Again, each one of these are flexible to be interchangeable, size, shape, and what we put on it.
I like them.
Alderman Jacob.
On Concept A, you're showing it in two colors. I mean, if we go with Concept B, we could pick colors on that, too, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So do we need a vote on this? And if so, what are we calling? Alderman Winger.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the different concepts, and Concept B, the letters aren't popping out when I look at the print-in page. I'm kind of thinking it's going to be hard to read for the traveler and the car. Is that just, you know, me thinking that, or is it going to be kind of hard to read? Okay.
And one thing we discussed right before this meeting and prior to this even is, what's the next step? And the next step is for us, once we have that design decision, is to take these signs and choose a couple, the directional and the road signs probably the best ones to look at, and find out what their readability on the roadway is. Now, we've looked at the size of the lettering and what they need to be, and the contrast of the white on the darker color, and we want to make sure that that's correct. So that's what our next step would be to, is to confirm those things and make sure that they are functional, not just pretty. Hopefully, pretty.
And if they're not functional, we would just go to a different plan?
Well, I think we would look at what the background color would be if they're not popping. If it's not legible, we would start to look at a darker contrast. Because you'll see in the, on the left side, the directional sign, that background is like a lighter gray, like a charcoal gray. We would start to deepen that gray and make sure that that was more readable.
Mayor, please.
A question on, you said this is like some type of mesh, I mean, or could it be like a glass, some type of frosted glass?
It could be.
Because I'm sure we're going to probably end up lighting some of these bigger ones.
Right, absolutely. I think the gateway signs lend themselves to be illuminated, and we could look at doing a Plexiglas or a polycarbonate material where that internal glow could happen. If it was frosted, it would have a nice feel to it. We could even add, you know, it's a punched metal when I say mesh. It's a punched metal layer on top of the polycarbonate, and that would nice, you know, break in light. It would be a good opportunity for that.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Are we looking at the Irving Park Road and the other street signs? Are they going to be lit, street signs, or are we just going with regular green or the burgon, or what do you say, burnt umber in a pan?
Burnt umber, yeah. That's correct. The illuminated street signs are IDOT standard street signs, so we don't, we won't go into that realm. These will just be reflective lettering, so light popping, headlights would pop on them.
Okay. The second question, some of these, I don't know what you're calling, the wayfaring signs that go to the welcome to, can they be punched metal with lit behind it?
Absolutely.
With the lighting behind it or frosted LED lit?
Exactly. Exactly right. But it's a great opportunity to create kind of a case for these to really have some glow to them at night and really pop, and not just for the daytime, you know, to have that appeal, but more at nighttime as well.
Thank you.
Alderman Catalano.
My question was answered. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob.
Art, you said on your, on the committee, that they kind of discussed the wording below each other. Was it just because of the way it pops out, or kind of like Christine was saying, or how did that come up?
Well, one was that it does pop out because it lends, you can get a bigger, bolder type font, if you will, although it's more pleasing or more comfortable to have it in one line. But as I said before, I mean, this is the concept drawing, so when it goes to the fabricators, that design will be, you know, further explored, you know, whether we have to light them or do them layers of punched-out metal and plastics or different colors behind them to get them to pop more, or even enlarge what's there. So if right now, they have that scaled to two foot wide, maybe it needs to be two foot six inches wide, you know. Nothing here is really set in stone, other than we need to look at this family, this grouping, and we acknowledge that this is the one that we really like and want to explore. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'll make a motion that we approve Concept B to move forward with it.
I'll second their motion.
I'm assuming for everybody, I'm assuming that we're looking at Concept B? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
The one that's on the screen?
Yes. Wooddale all in one, one word like that. With a welcome underneath it. No, he said we could put it, though. That's what I'm saying.
Mayor, please.
I was just going to say, the other photo has the welcome on the pedestal.
Right.
We can incorporate that welcome into this sign concept.
Mayor, please.
That one's a little bit more difficult. And we could look at shortening the, one of the first two gateway signs to be more of a minor gateway. Once you start to get to that thin model, you can't, you can't get them to be horizontal in the same plane.
Alderman Catalano.
Can we change the leaf on that? Use a different leaf?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Lakota works out this design and fine-tunes it, and they'll be coming back to show us, you know, what we got, really a second pass to approve what's going on. So if there's no other questions?
Right, but wait, no color discussion, right? Not now?
Not now. So if there's no other questions, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries. Mr. Forrest.
Just want to make one quick comment. Now that we've narrowed down the design, when Lakota does come back with the final, you know, version to show you, he can also bring that in in three, four, or five different color schemes, so that at that point, we can kind of make a decision. It's just a matter of him pushing buttons on the computer to completely change the colors, so.
Thank you. Okay. Items to be considered at future meetings, approval for staff for minor zoning variations in June, amendment to Chapter Five, Article One, Section 5.101 of the Municipal Code in June, and the Community Park/Town Center Vision Plan in June. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Make the motion. There's a second.
No. Alderman Jacob.
Could we, could we put on the agenda for a future date to discuss the upkeep of properties, foreclosures in specific?
Sure.
And what the policy is, et cetera.
Yes. Mayor, please.
Real quick, about a month or so ago, we talked about Historical Society, Alliance Club, BFW, fundraiser ball, city ball. I have a lot of information here, how Addison runs theirs. I have a lot of information here, how Addison runs theirs. They did mention there was some staff time involved through the finance department. Question is, before we go any further, is the council still willing to do this? Or do we need to put this on an agenda, Jeff? Do we need to have a discussion on this? Well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I like to look at it before we.
Right, well, that's why. Because there's staff time involved.
Okay, so you, somebody's gonna prepare that and give it to us, okay. Any other items or questions? If not, I make a, my motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm calling to order the Public Health, Safety and Judiciary Committee. Will the minuteaker please reflect? Same members are present, I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated May nine, two thousand thirteen. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question, Alderman Lazara? Okay, no, that's okay. Just want to make sure. Anything else? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on vehicle replacement number four oh one. That is my motion. Is there a second? After the second, I'll call in questions.
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Anything on the question? Alderman, you do, Wesley?
Is this vehicle, was this one of the vehicles that we pre, pre-order, or is this in this year's budget?
No, you know, the, the last, this last year was a little bit unique with Ford coming out later with their vehicles that we didn't have to pre-order for a cutoff. This is still under the state bid for this, and they have items, vehicles being delivered under this. So, this is not a pre-order for any next fiscal year. We, we're just ordering it during this fiscal year. It's just the way the timing fell out this year with the cutoff dates that were set by the dealers.
So, this order is not for the previous years, like we ordered ahead of time?
Correct.
That's correct. That's on this year's budget, and it has not been ordered yet, and it's in the current fiscal year budget to be paid.
Okay, can I get the other question out of the way, too?
Please do.
What about four eighteen? That's the next one.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Or I'll ask the question out, go ahead. Don't answer that question, I'll ask it the next time. Go ahead.
Okay, we can do it that way. I want to call in Alderman Lazara, then the mayor, Alderman Lazara.
Do we know what the, these vehicles that we're replacing, do we know the value of these vehicles?
I, I'm not sure the exact cost of it, that these are ones that we would typically sell then on public surplus. I haven't researched the trade-in values at all on it. Obviously, they're, it was seventy-eight thousand miles, and being four years old, it's gonna be nowhere near what we paid for it, so.
Please follow up.
You know, Chief, we were talking about having a car, like a, I guess, a dummy car, parked in different locations of our neighborhood. Would this be a good time to maybe instead, you know, seeing what these cars are worth, and instead of just selling them outright, maybe use one of these cars as our decoy car? I mean, just, just a thought on that.
I actually, we're exploring this option, and what I would probably prefer, instead of car four oh one, because that's the old, that would be the old watch commander car, is use one of the old Crown Victorias that will actually be coming back to you later in the summer, once pricing is out for those, because those are more recognized as an everyday patrol car. And then what we would be doing is looking to move them around, and you have to occasionally staff that also with a live person in there. It can't become a stale thing. When the state police did it years ago on the tollway, they'd sit there for two months at a time, and everyone knew it was dummy. So, we've been actually talking about a plan on how to move those around throughout the community, and then how to move them out throughout maybe a retail store on occasion, really implement, I'm working with another agency that's done it, and it's not rocket science, but they've had some good successes with it. And I was just talking to one of them today about how we could maybe implement that and what they've seen with success with it. So, I would say, I believe it's a good idea, but I would probably do that with one of the vehicles, the regular patrol cars. We're look, gonna be coming to look to you later this summer, once pricing's out for, so, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief, I see we're going to a Tahoe over the Explorer. We need the extra space, I mean, the gas, I'm just thinking of the gas.
And this is actually, did I, you know, I, that's my mistake, it's actually an Expedition that we're going to, to a Tahoe from. I, I see I did write in the memo that it was an Explorer. But yeah, the Expedition, this Tahoe is a police package Tahoe. One of the issues we're facing with the car right now is with all the electronics, we have to constantly recharge this vehicle. This has dual batteries, it's, it's got everything we need to, to outfit all our electronics, so, my apologies for that.
Alderman Wesley, is this in number four oh one?
I don't know, I, I guess I will answer about this dummy car that we talked about. When did that conversation come up here at the council level or in committee?
Chief?
It, it didn't. No, it, it didn't. It's been a discussion that we've been talking about, and I know it's come up in some conversations about some community policing things, but just one of the techniques that we might be looking to employ in the, in the future, so.
Maybe I missed something.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on vehicle replacement number four eighteen. I do make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Wesley?
Again, is this one that's being purchased ahead of time, on next year's budget or this year's budget?
No, this is out of this year's budget, and this is through the suburban purchasing cooperative, which we order our squads through now, but it is a competitive process that meets the city's bidding requirements, budgeted for out of this fiscal year and ordered out of this fiscal year, and then delivered out of this fiscal year.
Okay, and a follow-up question on that. On the vehicles that we do now, after we get rid of them, we send them auction, have we looked at doing a different direction on doing something with our vehicles down the line, instead of going right to auction?
Uh, yeah, that's been done throughout, you know, throughout my history with the city, I know. As long as I've been here, where like our citizen volunteer vehicle, that's usually an old squad car. The vehicle that we would use, that the Fenton officer takes over the school, that's always a used car that gets transferred out of Patrol Division into their administrative vehicles. Those get transferred into Detective Division, and then in the past, they've been transferred over to Community Development. And, you know, so that's, they've always, if they could be repurposed based on what we need, we do reuse them.
What I was thinking about it before they go to auction, is there a way, instead of going right to auction and seeing if a citizen in our committee would like to buy it, or an employee down the line here? And, and give it an option to our employees? Because right now, we give our employees, an email went out to our employees for used computers to see if they want it. You know, is there a way, or is that got to be a policy change at the city council level, or could we look into that procedure?
I, I would say we'd probably have to ask legal on that, but I know the purpose for going out to public bid on something like a vehicle or public auction is to avoid any perception that, oh, well, the chief's getting rid of a car, and all of a sudden, his family member's buying it for a really reduced price. Maybe there would have to be a policy that it would have to be based on Kelly Blue Book price. I don't know, that, I would say that would have to be a legal question, but you gotta be careful with, especially the high-ticket item.
That I would like to look at, because there is another town that does that. And then the other, one other follow-up question, and I'll, close. The money, when we do our trade-ins for, or go to auction, where is that operating here? Where is that money going, maybe Jeff can answer. Where does that money go to? Does it go back in the police department equipment replacement, or does it go back in the general fund? Or does it go back into the?
Chief?
I, I do know we have a, a separate line item in the city revenue accounts entitled auction proceeds, and that's where it goes. The only time it would get returned to police operating funds is if it's a drug seizure vehicle. Those monies have to go into narcotics forfeiture, but these would go back into the general fund.
It would be nice and done in the past that the city council at least sees how much money we get for these vehicles, because we have no clue what's going in to that account after we sell these vehicles out for auction. So, I think it might be wise for us to look at some of those numbers, because maybe if these vehicles are coming back a little more, maybe we kick this vehicle budget down a little more, because we gain more for the auction stuff. So, I would suggest, next time we do any vehicles, public works and all that, that we get, see how much we got for it.
Yeah, I would agree with Alderman Wesley that perhaps within the lease budget, there's a line item on the revenue side, like saying proceeds. And, and it goes in through there, and it goes in the retained earnings. So, so then it's monies that will be for the future budget, and then those monies get allocated for vehicle replacements, and there'll be less that will have to come from other revenues. Mr. Murmas?
It's a great idea. I could've swore I've, I've seen a report like that maybe floating around on a staff level. Not gonna be a problem, we'll get that for you.
And, and in terms of next budget year, that, that the, we'll, we'll just change the line items and have it show? Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Chief, follow-up with Alderman Wesley on the auction process. One of my neighbors actually purchased a car from, I believe it was Itasca, they have a, they do a closed bid. Basically, I think the city, and I don't think they do it on all the cars, but some of the cars, it was like a, he told me it was like a sealed bid, but they said the minimum bid was, let's say, three thousand. So, if you wanted to bid that three thousand, or you wanted to bid three thousand and five, or thirty-one hundred, you know, it goes in an envelope, sealed bid, when they open it, the guy with the highest bid gets the car.
Chief?
You know, how the process works now on, on the public surplus, there is a reserve number that's set. I'd, I'd have to verify with Brad, but I believe it is set by the garage, as far as what we believe we should get for it as a minimum. Until that reserve is met, the item is not sold, and then it becomes a competitive bidding process, similar to an eBay. We've actually had people drive several hours. We sold the old elliptical on there. Someone drove from Iowa to pick up the elliptical. So, we do get a very large audi, audience through that publicsurplus.com that we probably wouldn't get if it was just local. We may be able to meet the minimums, but sometimes it goes well beyond the minimums, is what I've, what I've seen.
Anything else on vehicle four eighteen? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A is the keep fab system. Is that, Chief, is that the expansion process of what we've already done for, for the city buildings, or is that the treatment plant, or is it both?
No, that would be the expansion, the completion.
Okay.
A decision to be brought forward, whether you, you guys want to complete the rest of the doors that were originally sculpted as a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Any other items for future meetings? Alderman Jacob?
The quiet zone with the trains.
Okay, so, we can add that on as future meeting. Now, you probably need additional time to, to work on it, or when is a fair time to bring it back? Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, that's already in our notes for a future item. We're trying for June, but for sure by July.
Okay, so we can list it as future meetings, and it might say July?
Correct.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Is this discussion, discussion on the quiet zone gonna be affected by the intersection improvements? Should that conversation, although I know we need, want to have it, should that be delayed? Or should it be now, can some of those things be incorporated with the intersection improvements?
Chief?
I think the big unknown is gonna be how those Irving Park intersection improvements reduce the risk rating for our overall three crossings. We can certainly have the discussion now, and based on some of the research that we're already doing on it, we don't necessarily have to make the decision to go forward with committing funds on this meeting. It, it might be a, an advisory thing to say, all right, here's where we're at, we've taken some steps towards it. But the council could at that point decide, well, let's start putting some engineering funds to the Ash Street Crossing. But as far as the Irving and Wooddale Crossing, that one, until that is completed, I don't think you're gonna have a complete answer how well it's gonna increase the safety of the area. So, it might be, end up being a two-pronged thing. But I, I think we're okay to have the discussion. We can certainly at least, based on the citizen concerns and, and that, at least have a discussion about it, and we've done quite a bit of research to kind of give an update to where we're at with it at this point.
Okay, as long as, I, I just don't want to get too carried away if it was with engineering. The conversation is good, and we can address all those things. All right, thank you.
I'm gonna call in the mayor, then Alderman Wesley. Mr. Mayor?
As far as Wooddale and Irving, about a year ago, I spoke to the engineers, H R Green, regarding the quiet zone. And Mr. Crawl, you know, I spoke that at some point, we might want the quiet zone, could you look into the gates? And he has done that already.
The gates are.
So, some of the, the gates should be part of the project already, at least at those intersections. But that does not qualify as for a quiet zone, because then there's other work that needs to be done.
Right.
Alderman Wesley?
It's not for future meeting, ma'am chairman, but I just wanted, I talked to several aldermen the other night, and due to the disaster in Oklahoma, years ago, we brought out a, like a piggy bank to collect money. I have, I would like to launch a program again. These canisters will be installed in several businesses in town. It will be collected, and it will be provide, joined to provide people with a crisis today with the hope of tomorrow. The city of Wooddale would like to help those recover from diverse tornadoes in more Oklahoma. Your contribution will be sent to American Red Cross, which will provide food and shelter to those victims. Thank you for your contribution. So, I will ask that this will be, we are ready to launch this program. I know it's not the proper time here at the committee meeting, but I am asking permission from this council to launch this program, effective immediately this weekend or as soon as possible.
I, I think that's a, a, a perfect thing to do, so I certainly would agree. And I'm gonna ask if anyone objects, and I know Alderman Lazara wants to be recognized, but are there any objections to immediately doing this program and, at this point? And, and then Alderman Wesley, are you the focal to retrieve the canisters at a certain time?
No, the police officer, how we did in the past, once the, the, the businesses will get a letter, and once it reaches a capacity or whatever, they will notify the P D or the finance department. We will go pick the money up, take it out of there, and we will still install the, keep the boxer and keep contribution going as long as we want to. Or once we see the contributions go down so low, we will pull that off the, the businesses.
Okay, okay, and thank you for your contribution on it, that it's an important thing. Alderman Lazara?
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Wesley, and I would also like to make a motion that we donated, what's that?
Oh, that we shouldn't make motions and.
On this?
Items to be considered.
Okay, well, I would like to consider giving five hundred dollars to start this, this fund from the city.
Do that at council.
We can do that at the council, okay.
So, there'll be something, Mr. Mayor, that you would?
That we can put that on there? Okay.
Okay. Any other items for future meetings? Okay, uh, Mr. Murmas?
Just one quick other item, not under public health and safety, but in relation to the quiet zone, I've asked H R Green to come in and give an update as to where they're at with the great separation, or the safety improvement project. So, when they're here for that meeting, which will be probably in June, you can then maybe ask some quiet zone questions in relation to where. ask some quiet zone questions in relation to where they're at with the, the regular safety improvement project.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Minutetaker, please note that the same people are here by the quorum. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for May ninth, 2013. Do I have a second?
Second.
That passes. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, I have a report and recommendation, pay request, partial number twelve, Maxim Construction Corp., for the North WWTP upgrades, Phase One A project, in the not-to-exceed amount of seven hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any questions? Eugene?
I take, take it all the other stuff is in there that we talked about?
Are the appropriate contractual modifications have taken place?
My other question is, I understand. You know what? I just don't think it's.
What, I'm not sure, what, what are you asking? Nothing? Okay. So, can I get a roll call, please?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
That passes. Report and recommendation, pay request, partial number two, for R.J. O'Neal, for the NWWTP Energy Efficiency Improvement Project, in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley?
Is that project completed now?
Oh, there's some additional control wiring needs to take place, so there will be some additional work.
So, how much is left on this contract? How much is left on this contract?
Be some retainage, which is about nineteen thousand dollars, and there's some additional three thousand after that.
May I ask a follow-up with that?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman.
I thought, we talked about putting what the total bill was, what the total project was, and after that, how much was gonna be left on that, what was left in that contract. I don't see that happening, 'cause I thought that was the discussion that the council had some time ago, that I have no problem paying the bills here, but if, I don't know what the whole, because I'll tell you, when we vote for a contract, the group, I don't know how much it is until.
Do we have a, an answer to Alderman's question? Rich?
Yes, there's, on, included in your documents is the original contract value, and I apologize, I misspoke. Original contract value is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. What's paid out to date will now be a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and seven dollars.
I see it.
So, there's an additional sixty-seven thousand dollars that remains on the contract.
That's fine, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't go further though.
Jeff Murmas?
Wesley's referring to, he's, he's correct. At one point, Baxter and Woodman was making it a little easier to find within the document, for instance, on their cover letter, they would list it, instead of kinda having to dig through the supplemental attachment. The Baxter and Woodman contract manager that was helping us out before is, is different than the one on this sheet, so, kind of a, a mistake, I would, I would say, but we can make it easier to find, although it's in there.
I, I.
But, he's correct. It was before a little bit easier to find.
Okay. Mr. Gallus?
If you'd like, I can put it on the cover page that goes along with this as well, with my executive summary, if you'd like that in the future, if that will make it things simpler, okay? Thank you for the, good comment.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just for clarity, it's nice to have that, because it's, especially with the iPad, you don't have the ability to sort through all those sheets, so if you got one sheet, even though it's buried, you know, sheet five, when you're sitting up here, it's hard to scramble back and forth. So, yeah, it would help a, a great deal. Thank you.
Any other questions? Have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Next, report and recommendation, pay request, final, for Thorn Electric, Inc., for the Salt Creek Artamental Lighting Project, in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-three cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff?
See, if you guys, if the council noticed, this was the normal contract administrator that we use through, through BMW, and I trained him to put it the way you guys like it, and it's on this one, but the other guy, I forgot to tell, so this is what it normally would look like, which has all the amounts.
It's all in the training.
Any other questions? Alderman Wesley?
I, I have one que, is, are they going, seed that, or I, I didn't notice if it was seeded yet, the dirt in it? It's already done?
Has been seeded, and it's growing, thankfully, because of the rain.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Roll call?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Next is report and recommendation, consideration of replacement option for the NOAA Flood Monitoring System. Rich, Gallus, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approximately twenty-five years ago, due to some heavy flooding in, in the city, the city made a commitment to a system, which has been commonly referred to as the NOAA System. That system has served us, again, for greater than twenty-five years. Unfortunately, recent events have caused it to malfunction, and it's time for replacement. What you see before you is a baseline cost of seventy-one hundred dollars to replace that system in kind. So, when you read this document, you'll see a table at the end of the document that says items one through three. That seventy-one hundred dollars, again, is to buy new computer hardware, two thousand thirteen version hardware, a modem, and some basic cabling, so that people can continue to call the system and get two pieces of information, the depth of the river, or the elevation of the river, and then, real-time rainfall information, specific to Wooddale, and that information comes from a, a gauge that is in existence today, both in the river and a rain gauge that obviously is outside of the river. In addition to that, you'll see what's referred to on that table as items four and five. That would be to take this system that we would want to replace, which needs replacing because it's no longer functioning, and connect it to our future SCADA system. That's not something we have to do tonight, but it's something that I felt, since we're talking about the system, it's my opportunity to share with you that there's an opportunity to improve the functionality of the system. And then, item six, as you see in that table as well, is new weather sensors and new gauges to measure the depth in the river. That's another eighty-five hundred dollars. If we choose, or if you choose, to wanna do all these at once, the cost is twenty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars to do all of those enhancements. What I believe, we're really seeking, in, in immediate need is to replace the system in kind that exists there today. And again, that's a seventy-one hundred dollar commitment, but again, it's an opportunity, you know, for us to monitor the Salt Creek conditions, and it's a necessary component of communicating with our public. That said, I'll open it for discussion.
Rich, I got a question for you. The other two items, the ten thousand, three hundred, and the eighty-five hundred, when do you actually think that we would be ready to install these?
We could install them now, but really, the SCADA system will not be fully operational for another eighteen months, as we move into the next phase of, of the operation, and if we choose, this evening, I could bring that back to you at a later date, it won't affect the installation or replacement of this new system today.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Wesley?
I, I have a twofold on this question.
Okay.
The, if we choose to go with item one through, one through three, how quick could that be installed?
It would be about four weeks, depending on the delivery of Campbell Scientific's equipment, so that's something we would order, and when that arrives, we can install it the next day.
We install it, or do you come out and install it?
Have to be somebody who does the low voltage type work.
So, is that part of this price?
Yes, that's seventy-one hundred dollars, all inclusive.
My question is here, I would consider doing the whole thing and locking the price in now, 'cause if we wait eighteen months, we know how prices go up, and that's the price we got right now for, is that one contractor, or is that out for bid, or no?
It would be one contractor in BWCSI who would tie into the SCADA system, was also handling the SCADA system, so it could be done as an addendum to their agreement.
So, but they?
Alderman Wesley?
My, my concern is, if we, I just don't wanna piecemeal this together like we did with the.
All right, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I make the motion that we go ahead and approve one through six items for twenty-five thousand, nine hundred.
Second.